Okay, I would belatedly like to call to order our annual meeting for the year of 2018. And so, the first item of business is going to be the election of officers and I would like to turn the chair over to our Board Secretary, Tim Bartlett, for the conduction of the election of the Board President and the Board Vice President.
Great. It's that time of year, again, to elect our officers for the Board of Urbana Park District. Are there nominations for President of the Board?
I move to elect Commissioner Michael Walker to be Board President.
Second.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none?
This is Banana Republic.
Let's go with a roll call vote. We'll start with LaShonda.
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Michael Walker will be the President for the upcoming year. Thank you. Next, are there nominations for Vice President of the Board?
I move to elect Commissioner Nancy Del Coleman to be Board Vice President.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? We'll go with a roll call vote, starting with Meredith.
Aye.
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 Looks like the ayes have it, so Michael Walker is President of the Board and Commissioner Nancy Del Coleman is Vice President of the Board. We'll turn that back over to our newly elected President, Michael Walker.
Okay. Well, thank you all.
You're gonna make a speech?
And congratulations.
Vice versa.
So, next item of business then is the annual Board Appointments and so, action to appoint our Board Secretary, Assistant Secretary, Treasurer, Attorney, Recorder, and Auditor. So, we normally handle this as a package. There is a suggested slate before us this evening. Is there anybody wishing to move that slate as a whole or wishing to modify it?
I move to make the following appointments. Board Secretary, Tim Bartlett. Assistant Secretary, Allison Jones. Board Treasurer, Richard Percival. Attorney, Matt Dearing. Excuse me, Board Recorder, Allison Jones. Or Designee of the Business Manager. Auditor, Martin Hood-Freeze, is that how they pronounce it?
Freeze?
And Associates. Freezey. Freezey and Associates.
Second.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that carries unanimously. Next item is action to appoint our Commissioner to the Urbana Parks Foundation. We do this on an annual basis, actually, appoint one Commissioner or some other Designee to be our actual, an actual voting member of the Foundation Board. Is there a nomination for this position?
Yes, I move that we appoint LaShonda Cunningham, Commissioner LaShonda Cunningham, to the Urbana Parks Foundation. You're all right with that, right?
Yes.
I second that.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any other nominations or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye opposed, and that carries unanimously, with perhaps one abstention. And...
Recusable.
Recusable, yes. Action to appoint Commissioners as our UPDAC representatives. In the past, we have done up to two, and it's advisable not to have more than two, otherwise it then becomes a different kind of meeting, so...
Oh, that's right. Yeah, in the old days, we didn't, we didn't, nobody cared. It all goes.
So...
So, I move to appoint Commissioners Nancy Del Coleman and LaShonda Cunningham as UPDAC representatives.
Is that all right with you?
Pardon?
You don't have to, um...
Or is it too much?
Well, that's fine. I haven't really attended UPDAC. I guess more, I'm more of like a backup person for Nancy when she's gone.
Right.
But I'm still willing to serve in that capacity.
That's, that's, I mean, if that's okay with you, that's, that's fine, because that's...
Yeah.
Otherwise, since you've already got one another, that's fine. Okay.
Yeah.
It kind of sets democracy back, this, doesn't it?
But one of yours about the second.
So, we have, we have a motion.
Oh, yeah, who's gonna say that?
Sorry. We're down one, so, we can have five.
Can we s-?
Oh.
You wanna second it? Can you second things?
Actually, the Chair can second the motion, indeed, and I, and I will do that, given that, given that we've, yeah, situation, and I hope you, I hope you aren't both, you aren't planning to abstain, both of you.
Okay, I'm voting for LaShonda and she's voting for me, and then we've got it covered, right?
Well, the motion was for both of them, so, okay.
But that's in our hearts.
All right, so, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that carries unanimously, I believe. And Item D, Appointing Representative to the Urbana Tiff Joint Review Board. And we have, oh, four some years now, actually, I and Tim together have, have served in that role.
I move to appoint Commissioner Michael Walker and Director Bartlett to the Urbana Tiff Joint Review Board.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that carries with, with no negative votes. So, I believe that we must, at this point, adjourn our, our annual meeting, since we've done all the items on the agenda, and we can thank Dick Percival for re-upping for another year as Treasurer.
Brave man.
We appreciate it.
All right.
Thanks, Dick. Okay, see you next time.
Okay, and so, we are now on to our regular monthly Board Meeting. So, I would like to call to order the May meeting of the Urbana Park District Board of Commissioners. And I, as I understand it, there's no request for remote attendance?
Correct.
So, the first actual item of business is to accept our agenda as presented or else amended, and I'm not aware of any proposed amendments.
I move that we accept it and as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded and thirded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed.
As good as it's gonna get.
Okay, so, we're on to public comment, and I don't see anybody here from the public wishing to address the Board, and there are no new staff appointments to be introduced?
Tonight, no.
Okay. And moving on then to the UPDAC report, I think Chairperson Diggs is traveling and not available for presenting such a report, so it's time to move on to the Consent Agenda. And on the Consent Agenda this evening are the approval of the minutes of the April 3rd Board Study Session, April 10th, regular Board Meeting, action to accept the philanthropy report and gifts listed with gratitude, the various monthly reports, including the three main, normal ones, Administration, Planning and Operations, and the Recreation Department, approval of the monthly paid accounts payable, action on Resolution 2018-06 to appoint the Park District's Freedom of Information Act Officers, action on Resolution 2018-07 to appoint the EUPD Open Meetings Act Representatives, and lastly, action on Resolution 2018-08 to appoint the Urbana Park District ADA Coordinator. So, those items are sitting there awaiting action in an omnibus fashion, although it is the purview of any single Commissioner to remove any or all of these items from the Consent Agenda for separate action. Is there any desire to do that?
I move we approve all the action items on the Consent Agenda and accept all the information items listed on the Consent Agenda in an omnibus manner.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded, and under our Consent Agenda rules, there's to be no further discussion, so we will do a roll call vote, starting over here with Commissioner Cunningham.
Aye.
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 Okay, and that carries unanimously with all four present Commissioners voting. And that moves us to Financial Reports, except we have no...
No reports this month. I think Katie let us know last month.
Right.
And annotated as well.
So, that moves us on to the Executive Director's Report.
Great, well, we'll start right out. As you all know, several of the staff journeyed over to Springfield for the 2018 IPD Legislative Conference. It's always an interesting trip to go to Springfield in the springtime. One note, I think they moved the conference up a week early. I don't know the full House and Senate schedules, but this year, they were on the floor most of the time, so we really didn't get a lot of, you know, private time to talk with them, but we did get a chance to at least connect with everyone. First of all, we had staff there for the Day at the Capitol, Ellen, Elsie, Holly, and one of our UPDAC members, Melissa Logstrom, was there also during that time at the, Day at the Capitol, prior to the Legislative Conference, the day before. Senator Bennett, Representative Amens, and Senator Rose did stop by our booth and talk to us. So, again, I think we see value in having a booth there at the rotunda. It does seem like sometimes a little self-serving with all the other Park Districts sort of vying for attention, but that is where our legislators come out and look for the districts, so they know, go to the floor, see where they are, so we did get our opportunity. I think Derek Corky and I talked with Representative Amens, and earlier in the day, Ellen, Elsie, and Holly, and Melissa spoke with Senator Bennett, and then later, while we were there, again, Senator Rose came by. While he doesn't represent our Park District, he's a nearby friend, and we sort of, as one of our other partners on the regional trail, the Forest Preserve is represented by them as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, we've always had a very good rapport with all of them, and again, Carol and Scott invited us all to meet with them back in the district. I think we think that's a, that's a fine idea. I still think there's a lot of value, you know, in the Legislative Conference, because the next day was the actual educational sessions, and I think they do an excellent job of, usually the format is, often they'll have a couple of media people present and sort of give their overview of what's going on in the state politically, kind of from the media perspective, what people are talking about, how it's played out, and the various versions. And then the next panel typically is usually a couple of Senators and a couple of Representatives at the state level, and they have a series of questions that they walk them through, and each person gets a chance to respond. And, you know, over the number of years I've attended, they're always well thought, they're often critical of their own work, you know, they talk about bipartisanship and crossing the aisle, and really all the things, at least in the parks and recreation industry, we think is really important. Now, we'd like to see constant evidence of that, but, you know, they're at least acknowledging that. This year, again, it's kind of tough, because your next step is a few more training classes, and then they send you over to the Capitol. You know, they let us know, kind of the setup is, you know, there's no money, there's not a lot of, you know, new things that are on the horizon. I think, you know, the big push was to get grants back in, in the focus, so that was the number one message we had at our Legislative Breakfast. The plan was to carry that to Springfield for the conference, and I think everybody did that, we all did that. We don't attend the, there's a social that is held out at the Country Club, and I think we stopped going to that about five years ago. It just doesn't seem conducive to conduct, you know, business. What I, I think works well for probably some of the Senators or Reps, if you had multiple Park Districts that you overlap, you could see them all right there, or at least have a, you know, good connection with, you know, 20, 30, 40 people, you know, from the various districts. Our Representatives and Senators don't really enjoy participating in that, they go to many events out there and other places. They've let us know that's not their favorite thing, so we'd rather have another, you know, dinner or meeting back here, so that's sort of the path that we've been on. We would like to sit down and talk with them both, give them updates on our work with Crystal Lake Park, what we're doing with our strategic plan, and any other initiatives that relate to grants or support. So, again, I think our hoping is to shift a strategy, not requests, okay, can you help do this, but how do we get in, in order? How do we get things alive? Who else can we be talking to? What other, what else can we do? What can our Advisory Committee do to get, you know, any, any activity or get something on a radar? So, we're really trying to strategize. The other thing we want to do is continue to follow up with, you know, two, two or three times a year, mailings about the Park District, what we're doing, just, just stay on folks' radar. And, you know, overall, I think it's well done, IPD does a really good job. I think they do a great job of bringing people together, teaching us some things, setting us up for success, but then it's really up to every District and their legislators to take it from there, to make connections and, you know, see what, what can be done. I think the general feel, you know, in Springfield right now is very limited, low on promises and, you know, what can get done, so, you know, again, I'm not so sure this year was the best year ever of coming home with big messages or, you know, hey, we're gonna be able to do this, but we'd like to at least follow through and stay on that steady diet of communicating with our legislators. And again, if they don't see us or know what's going on in our District, they're gonna be disconnected, they're not gonna know, so it's our job to keep them informed, maintain those relationships, you know, seek them out and seek their advice and their help. So, we hope to follow up in June and have a, have a sit-down. I also want to find out if there's, if the conference will shift back to a later week, if that'll help as well, because literally, they were, you know, in, on the floor, and at best, they walk off for five, 10 minutes and visit with you, and then, and they go back, so, you know, that's a two-day, you know, event, and so, we want to get the most out of that. So, we're not being critical, it's just the way it is, but we want to stay in touch with our legislators and...
The UPDAC person who went along was quite impressed. It was very...
That's what I understood.
Yeah, she had, she had a lot of things to say, and I think...
Great.
You know, you tend to see your Park District just in its entirety where you are, and you forget that it's, it's linked statewide, and that, that there is, there are people to talk about, there are people who are interested in parks on a wider scale, and she also noticed the absence of, and questions about the absence of a neighboring Park District, and she was...
Yep.
Very proud of us.
Yes.
Of us being there, happy that we were there, and, and could see that it was a vital thing for us to be there, so...
We, the staff thinks it's an excellent role for UPDAC to help with.
Oh, absolutely.
Because, I mean, you just said it, great education, they see things in a bigger light, it starts to make more sense, you know, how we're run as a state. You know, again, Illinois has so many amazing things going for it in the parks, you know, end of things, you know. I'd say we're leaders and we have so many great resources out there, so it's a great way to get UPDAC active, and so we think that's a good role.
I think so, yeah.
We could take more, you know, if there's more people that are able to go.
Yeah, I think encouraging UPDAC to go is really an...
Right. And we think it makes an...
Important thing.
Impress, kind of impresses our legislators, too, that, you know, we're paid staff.
That's not just us, right.
You know, we need to be there, but we have citizens that are, you know, compelled to be there. We think that's a really important message. So, again, it was, overall, we deem it a success, we always enjoy going, you just can't guarantee what, what it's gonna be like and what'll come out. And lastly, it's a good chance for Champagne Park District, Urbana Park District, and the Champagne County Forest Preserve District staff and any of the Board members meet, just friend-building and sharing what's going on in the districts, and I think it's safe to say we're all in the same boat. We'd love to see more state resources, we have more needs than, you know, we're able to provide. We hope things get, working better at the state level, so that we can start counting on a few things in, in the future. But again, I use the word "hope," we understand there's a lot of other issues, you know, going on, so, but I, the other fact, too, is we know our legislators are supportive of what we do, you know, they have families, they come to the parks and the events themselves, so they know firsthand. I think Representative Amens mentioned Crystal Lake again as her park, you know, when we visited with her, that means a lot, you know, to us, so, you know, I think we're in good standing on that. We just want to stay in dialogue, in dialogue with them, so... Last night, we had our strategic plan kickoff, I won't review all that, but I think from the staff takeaway, it was very good way to start that process, I think we learned a few things, shared a few things, and, and we're excited about getting that up on the on-ramp and moving that forward. A bit of news, we had a new grant program, I say new, it's new to us, brought to us, Bill Gray brought it to our attention. It's through IDOT, it's a statewide planning and research funding program, its acronym is SPR. It's Federal Funds for Planning and Research Activities. Again, these are federal funds, it's an 80% federal, 20% local match, so we love the 80/20s. The purpose of the grant, I quoted it, because I wrote it down, is it's for a cooperative, continuous, and comprehensive framework for making transportation investment decisions and carryout of transportation research activities throughout the state. So, we're really excited with the opportunity to recommend that we would make an application in working with Regional Planning Commission for the downtown KRT. So, the project parameters would be for where the trail corridor stops, out by Weaver Park, and carried over to Lincoln Avenue. I think we've shared with you all the, some of the images of what that could be like. The, kind of the challenge is, it's due May 16th, and so, we don't have a lot of time. Couple of things I do want to say is, I've never seen a planning grant. They're probably out there, but this one's being funded and activated right now. We think it's the perfect vehicle to do a project just like this. Now, we don't know what, I think there's $20 million that's been allocated statewide, so that's a reasonable amount of money, but we know transportation studies are very expensive, so, staff recommendation is that we work in a collaborative fashion with the City of Urbana, the Champagne County Forest Preserve, and their quest is with Carl to see if they would provide our 20% local match. So, what we're trying to do is get a scoping document put together to get over to Carl for them to review it. I think they're interested in helping with that, and I think there was a previous discussion that indicated that they might be helping with that. So, we've got a, a project scope to really do an analysis of that corridor from that edge to Lincoln Avenue, and we're estimating the cost at about $125,000. So, that would allow Carl to make their match, you know, of that portion. The rest would be funded through the feds, and the Urbana Park District staff recommend that we be the lead agency, because somebody has to be the lead. Obviously, with our background and experience in, you know, trails and grants, we're very comfortable. It's probably not advantageous for the city to do that, I think they'll assist, you know, in the process. We'll have a steering committee established, so there'll be representatives from all the groups, probably including others like MTD and some of our other, you know, local transportation-related folks, but we do think it's a good option. Obviously, we don't know our chances, but we're saying, recommending to the Board that we go ahead and do this, see what we get, obviously, if the answer's no, we're no further ahead. If it's yes, it would give us a great deal of information on that corridor.
Is this a one-off grant program?
It sounds like it's being activated, those are the words I use, you know, it may be, I think it's safe to say there's any number of grants that are just, you know, sitting idle, the programs that if they were activated or funded, could be reinvigorated. This one is, is going, and Bill saw it and brought it to our attention, and we looked it over and thought it would be an ideal program for just this project. And again, the timing is tight, but we think we can make that deadline.
Got a week to put together a grant.
Right. And I think the other bit of information is, our Regional Planning Commission offered to write the grant, the, if awarded, they would provide the services, which we're comfortable, obviously, a local group, and we think their charges, you know, costs would be more in line with, you know, if we were to try to hire an outside firm, you know, coming from somewhere. I think they're already, I think Rita Black said they were writing a couple of these other grants that are not competitive in our sort of category, so they have some experience or at least will have had a hand at putting something together. So, we think this would be a, a good venture for us. Usually, we have a lot more time to share with the Board, the background, the details, but essentially, we need to get as much information off that corridor to see what the potential is to create any, any form of, you know, bicycle pedestrian access on that. And we also know that won't be the end, that's probably just the study that gets us more information to get us talking and planning and sort of moving down that, that road, but sure would be timely. If Carl would agree to do that, that would be a great help, because I think all of the districts and the city included are pretty tight on our budgets right now, so we don't really have the ability to, you know, pick it up ourself and, and do that. So, I, I should say, it's likely that it would be contingent that Carl would meet this, otherwise, one of the other units would have to step up and say, you know, we can provide that local match.
Or could it be divided up?
We also discussed that, if, if there was some pushback or a reason, you know, could we split the cost or see how we could address it if...
Okay, so, but that, that's at least a possibility.
I think it's a possibility, obviously, the Board, we'd want your support on that, but if we could split it, if...
It's so, it's 20% of 125,000?
Yes.
So, that's like...
Right. And we, you know, kind of...
25,000?
Quickly came to that number, I'll just put it that way, we sort of, you know, I think RPC had some knowledge of what transportation grants studies cost, so they gave us some sort of range, and we think that that's probably, with the number of days left, that's probably a good level to, to scope it at. Again, we've not done this before, so we'll learn a lot of things, and if we don't get the grant, and if it's activated again, we could certainly apply again and prove our options, so, but, you know, the key thing here is working together and having one of our private businesses support an initiative that we think would really be good for them, it'd be good for the whole community, certainly good for the Park District and the city. Forest Preserve's very enthused, and they have their, I should mention, Corky, Derek and I are also serving on the east side in Vermillion County with a steering committee to get that moving, so we're thinking if that's going and we're working on the central area, that would help Urbana. We did discuss, you know, could we extend it further, further west into Champagne, pick up more partners, but I think we realized a couple of facts. One, we don't have a lot of time to communicate with those other entities. RPC doesn't really have any more concrete information beyond Lincoln Avenue going westward, so if they had all that information, they might be able to write a, you know, proposal that would include that. We think it's important to get the Urbana side going and then continue to have those discussions. You know, our follow-up is, let's get the west side activated, you know, they interest in this, you know, what can they do to get something going and, you know, start that? Where do they want to go, basically, learn a little more. So, it's not really a break in the action or a break in the plan, it's just, let's get this started, get it going, and then keep on that wagon of, you know, planning and communication. And then lastly, again, would be greatly appreciative if Carl would say yes, that would really help this kind of a proposal out, because we are, all the local units are fairly tight budgeted, and, you know, we'd have to make some adjustments to try to, you know, pick something like that up, although that portion isn't, you know, an amazing amount of money, it's just wasn't planned and budgeted.
But it would also be a good sign of local, non-governmental buy-in as well.
I would agree. So, if, assuming the Board's comfortable with that, we'll continue to proceed and, and make sure we get at least that May 16th day filed and get this submitted.
So, that's, that's the payoff that we, that we get?
Forward-thinking.
Yeah, that we're, that we're forward-thinking, that we've already thought about this.
I do agree with that.
Yes.
Absolutely.
That we've looked at things that we thought ahead, and...
We weren't in this spot.
Yeah.
We wouldn't be talking about this right now at all.
No, that's right, and that's, it's the same thing with the...
Right.
With the Wellness Center. If you, if you've thought about it, if you've looked at it, if you've looked into it, if a plum falls in your lap, you can say, oh, wow, we think this would suit us.
Right.
Rather than scrambling around, and, and I think often, these sorts of things come in on real short notice, and so, we're prepared, we're ahead of the curve in a lot of ways.
I agree with that, and I think further, we think we should continue on that track of...
Yeah.
Being project-ready, because it looks like that's the new format of, hey, if there is a call for grants, it's gonna be a short window, the ones with the most information, including public involvement in your process, we'll have a leg up on, on the applications. So, if you're waiting to be told and then you scramble, you probably will get that kind of outcome. So, we're excited about this, again, don't know our chances, there could be all kinds of other applicants. We expect there will be, because it's, you know, a great program. And then the unique opportunity to do analysis, usually it's construction or, you know, some other aspect, but not the planning side, and this corridor will take a lot of planning, because there's a lot to figure out. So, we'll proceed with that.
Kudos to you guys for some forward-thinking.
It was just amazing, something that actually could help us, opened up at the right time, even though it was two weeks, you know, from when it was due, so we, we feel compelled to respond. And lastly, I just want to mention, I think Corky mentioned it last night at the kickoff, but we had a rec staff support out at the Lyman Neighborhood Associations, their neighborhood gardenery, they had a kickoff for that season, Kyle Mills, Nikki, Elsie, Judy, Corky, were all there, with some part-time Park, Park District staff to help with that event, and I think there was a lot of goodwill exhibited there, and it was greatly appreciated to have folks out, so we're really pleased with that. I had a fairly short... I had a fairly short report myself, but I do want to see if we can yield some time to the planning staff to talk about capital updates under the director's report, if the chair would yield a little of my speaking time to them. All right, thanks.
Thanks, Tim.
Yeah, just a couple items I wanted to note tonight. The indoor pool air handling replacement. We'll have the installation bid portion of the project out this week. I think originally, we were planning for that bid award at the June regular meeting. We received some news that the fabrication of the unit is actually scheduled to be delivered in that second week of June. So we're planning to have a board award at the study session to allow contracts and everything to get signed, and then the, that contractor would then have a little bit of a buffer time to work out the logistics of bringing on that, that new unit. So, wanted to make sure you were all aware of that. The Phillips Rec Center, you may have noticed, is, is missing almost all of its siding at this point. The wrap is fully rounded. There's still a little bit of siding that needs removed up on the chimneys and some sheathing that's going to need replaced. Other than that, everything's been going pretty smoothly. I think yesterday, the siding itself was starting to get delivered to the site, so.
Yeah, since you're out there.
Yep, we're looking to be pretty good as far as schedule on that. This week, we'll be meeting with IGW tomorrow, actually, to start the process reviewing the scope and the plans for the bid for the James Room and Kitchen. We have that set for a July board meeting. I think one of the few items that we're doing on that meeting for scheduling purposes. Last week, we had a pre-construction meeting for King Courts. Been very pleased with our contractor, actually took some time and, and checked out some of our other tennis courts and looked over our conditions, and was very helpful. They're looking to start work in the next week or two. If you remember, we purchased the bank shot backboards ourselves for that lead time. We're also expecting the delivery of those in the next two weeks as well, so everything's at this point piecing together pretty nicely. I think we had a goal to have everything complete by Jettie Rhodes Day, and it looks like we are on track to do so.
Ah, that'd be great.
Aren't you kind of waiting for the other shoe to drop, though?
I am.
At all times.
It's too much good.
No, it's all good.
Yeah, yeah, scared of the gods.
Right.
We did have a, an ITAP Public Open House last week. It was attended by about fifteen to twenty people. I think pretty much for the most part entirely positive comments, so it went very well. Fairgram did a nice job. And speaking of Fairgram, their, the one-way road study, I think today, they had just finished doing the coring and the, and the testing of the twelve locations along the road. So in the next couple of months, we should be expecting that final report, analyzing the best route, and have a plan for striping and signage and how those connections interact. And following that report, we'll have a public meeting as well. So.
Great.
That's it for me, I think.
Thank you. I think that's all I had, unless there's any other questions about other areas.
Thank you all very much. Moving on to the president's report, in terms of upcoming meetings, UPDAC meeting on the twenty-second, and then we've got the study session June five and June twelfth for the regular board meeting. We also do need to make sure that we get something arranged in terms of appointing a new commissioner. And to that end, I'm, I'm wondering about the, the weekend of, of June second, if that is a possibility for commissioners. Meredith's travels are such that it'd be hard to do it anytime sooner than then. And I suppose there's also the question of whether it would be better for the commissioners to do it other than on a weekend, but.
I could do it of an evening.
On the evening of the day week or weekend?
Uh, weekday.
Okay.
I mean, like theoretically Tuesday, Wednesday, not Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday.
The sixth or the seventh?
Oh, sorry, the week prior.
Okay.
If that's.
The end of May?
Wednesday, the thirtieth. I can't do it on the thirty-first, sorry, that's my wedding anniversary.
And, but the twenty-ninth might be a possibility, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, but not till after seven, so.
And then Wednesday at what time?
Anytime after five.
Wednesday works for me as well. The thirtieth, May thirtieth?
For May thirtieth? Okay. And would, would you prefer that to a weekend?
I can do either or. I could do a Saturday morning.
How many candidates do we have?
Five, I believe.
And what, and we would.
I mean.
Thirty minutes.
Yeah, thirty minutes is, is a little tight, I think. I mean, perhaps we could do with forty minutes and then a five-minute break. I mean, it's, you know, if we're doing these back-to-back-to-back, it's, it's, it's going to take a little while to put that together.
And, I mean, we're, we are doing this supposing that their schedules are.
Yes, I understand.
Or that it's a, so perhaps we would have to, if we have more dates available, we could, we could fit people in and then put in a shorter time. Forty-five minutes wouldn't seem like such a.
Minutes, yeah. Well, that, that certainly gives two dates to, to start trying to work around with the candidates themselves.
We have a study session on the fifth, but also the rest of that week.
Yeah.
The sixth, the seventh is also open. I have an event on the, the fourth already.
Okay.
But of course, there was something that, I could do something before the study session, for example.
You could do something prior to the study session on the, on the fifth.
Yeah, if we did something at five and.
Okay.
What terms are study sessions?
Six-thirty.
Normally, six-thirty, but.
Would it be helpful to push the study session time back?
Well, let's, yeah, I mean, we gotta, we gotta coordinate this with candidates as well, so that's, so maybe we.
What's on the agenda for this? Staffing updates and solar updates, and we need to improve it. I guess, I'm just wondering, do we need the full time for the study session? In case it's an option for.
If it comes.
It's already time blocked on our.
Yeah, if it comes down that that's an important time slot, could we adjust the study session agendas?
We can do whatever we need to do to help out.
Right, okay.
So any of those work for me? The thirtieth, the fifth, sixth or seventh of June?
Fifth, sixth, or seventh, and, and, and June second as well, right, which is a Saturday.
Morning.
Morning, anyway.
Second.
Second, morning, okay.
Yeah, I'd prefer not the seventh, because I'm working on my mother's hundredth birthday for the night. I might be getting a little hairy by then.
All righty. Well, that gives at least some, some options to work with, and we'll be in contact with the, with the candidates and see how, what we can piece together with it.
Michael, can I check back those dates? What I have is May thirtieth as a potential, June second, June fifth.
Morning, June second, yeah.
Okay, more AM. June fifth?
June fifth, either before the study session or encroaching on the study session or both.
And June sixth?
Okay.
Okay.
Great. Hopefully, we can piece that together.
And not, not May twenty-ninth. We, we took that off the list.
Yeah, I think that was my fault. I mean, I can do, I could do something, but not until after seven.
Okay, that pretty well covers the president's report. That lays on reports. The finance study group has not met this month. That's going to happen on, I believe, the twenty-first of, of May. So that has not met since we've last had board meeting. The policy study group?
We met last week, and we had some sort of general updates. As you may or may not remember, we are, we went through, you, you remember, we went through the distinguished agency process, I know.
Don't we all?
But we aren't, we are not continuing that process, but that doesn't mean we aren't taking the best pieces of that process and moving forward. So staff has a wonderfully large Excel document of all the policies, and so it's quite useful and handy in terms of looking at when things have been reviewed and putting them on a schedule. One of the things we did review, so we reviewed some policy updates that relate to updating policies to reflect more practice, and so this is also something related to current practices in overtime for staff. And so we'll, you'll be seeing these documents at the June board meeting, and then also the sexual harassment document that is not the policy, because that is the legal ease. But then we had this document that was sort of like the user's guide.
Sure.
And so I think we're making some recommendations just to double-check that with our legal staff to make sure that we aren't putting information out there that is, could be interpreted as policy when the actual policy is, has a lot of legal ease. So, so, so what we can actually do. And am I missing anything, LaShonda?
No, the updates with the FLSA, right? That was just an update verbiage.
Yeah, just updates.
Updates.
Yeah, yeah, so. But there will be some new policy updates in the June meeting.
I think we all discussed the, it's not a policy, but we might be looking at veterans or active-duty.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Opportunities, benefits, might be something we can do on pricing or a day of celebration or something to honor active-duty or veterans. We have a few staff ideas, but again, I don't believe it'll end up in a policy. It might just be a.
Or a practice.
Practice and something that would be a, be in charge, sort of a thing.
More like free admission to like the pool or.
Kind of something like that. A lot of park districts are starting to recognize opportunities like that. We don't. We've talked about it at staff level, but we just haven't enacted anything yet.
Thank you much. Moving on, Urbana Parks Foundation representative.
We discuss new initiatives that are forthcoming, so more information will be presented about that, that the, that the foundation is working on. Also, the upcoming events, the Roots Walk, Strawberry Jam, so it's encouraged for, you know, if we're available to attend some of those events, they are encouraging us to attend those events as a joint participation for those. And that's pretty much it.
We're also working on a celebration for the Trailhead at Weaver Park.
Oh, that's right.
On May, May twenty-third.
Oh.
I know the foundation's working on being there for that as well.
Uh-huh, May twenty-third?
Yeah, that's when the bike event at the park is. We'll send out notes to get people activated.
We're supposed to make, the idea was the foundation's getting recognition for.
As a donor for the project.
Right, you know, time?
At six-thirty to eight is what you had told me, but.
Okay.
We'll, we'll send out information to get everybody on board and UPDAC and foundation alerted.
Been working on it the last day and a half or so, so that's why. It's all fresh, so.
Okay, ready to move on to the UPDAC planning study group? Is there anything to report there?
No, no.
Okay. So that takes us to old business, and we don't have any specific items on old business, and we did not remove anything from the consent agenda, so we're past that. New business, same story. So we're on to comments from commissioners. Are there any comments from?
Yeah, I can't believe it's only candidate and we're done.
I just wanted to say that I encourage us to continue the work that we're doing with the school district. There's a lot of things going, you know, we're reading about a lot of different issues going on in the news, and so I just encourage us to keep working in the collaborative direction, which we always seem to be working with different units, you know, via the Splash or the Pop-Up Player. I do think that the programming that we, we do is valuable, so just keep up the good work.
Actually, I do, I do have, I almost have something to say. I stopped by the, the Lierman Neighborhood event on Saturday, and I, I'm never surprised, but I am sort of surprised, I mean, I'm not, I shouldn't be surprised, but it's, it's always such a pleasure to see all the staff there for something that has only a minor connection to, to what we're doing. And it wasn't just Elsie, you know, Corky was there, there were all sorts of staffs there, and it, it speaks to me about the commitment that the staff has to the community. And it's Saturday, it's people's, you know, the work week is Monday to Friday, and I realize that you wish your work week was only Monday to Friday. But, but still, I think there are a lot of organizations that don't, that aren't fortunate enough to have staff who are willing to put time and energy into something that's really a blip, a blip on our screen. I mean, we're, we're glad to be doing it. It's, it's not that they're unimportant, but they're, they're not part of our, our remit, so to speak. And, and I came home and told Fred that, you know, I was really proud of what the staff does, but this was just a real reinforcement that you guys are really terrific.
Thanks.
I think it's a good role for us in that instance, too. You know, being helpful, actually activated, but also a resource for information or education or, you know, how to do things.
But I think that it's a, it's a, it's a rare governmental group that, that understands that.
Right.
And is able to do it and has the buy-in and understanding of the staff that it's important.
I think that's part of that. You belong here.
Yeah.
And so I think it's great when they come to us. We love that, and we have lots of things we do that way, but we're, is interested in going to them, whoever them is, but going out of our walls to meet somebody on their, their terms.
But when you're juggling sixty-nine ping-pong balls, putting another one in there is not, you know.
Certainly more time, but.
Yeah.
I think just, you know, on those key opportunities, yeah, try to, try to make them.
Yeah, well, I think it's wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks, we appreciate it.
Do we, do we have an idea when we will have like a potential joint meeting with the school district with a new principal? They're getting ready to start interviews for middle school principal and assistant or associate vice principal with the school, and having the Splash program? So is there a possibility of having a joint meeting?
A good reason to.
Since we'll be working with someone new, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Who will be kind of overseeing the things at the middle school? So I'm just curious if, are they open to having a joint meeting?
Certainly, we could certainly discuss it. I think, you know, it may be a good opportunity for, you know, Michael and I to meet with Don and John and just kind of see what's going on, what, what would make a good topic, what's a good time of the year, you know, really start to assess, narrow it to when and what, what would be good topics that would be of interest to both groups.
Okay.
Any other commissioner comments or questions? Seeing none, I think we've exhausted our agenda by, before eight PM, so happy to declare us adjourned.
It must be a record.
Well, we didn't have financial reports, so that.
Right, stay happy.